Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five General Meeting of the Clifton Board of Education. Please rise for the flag salute and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, common, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call on Mr. Shahada, please.
Ms. Bassford.
President.
Mr. Brunscheck.
Here.
Mr. Canova.
Here.
Dr. Danny.
Here.
Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Ms. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Paris.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Commissioner Mejia, could you read the mission statement, please?
Sure. The mission of the Clifton School District in an open and reciprocal community partnership is to provide all students with a quality education to develop the skills necessary to become literate, lifelong learners who are responsible and productive citizens contributing to a democratic society in an ever-changing world.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right to the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Clifton Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the city clerk's office, Clifton Public Library, Administration Building, Senior Citizen Nutrition Center, on cable TV, in the local press, on the district's website, and mailed to presidents of parent-teacher organizations. This meeting will be tape-recorded in accordance with policy zero-one-six-eight. It's our student representative, Mark here. I'd like to welcome you up to give your report.
Good evening, everybody. Before I begin my report, I would just like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and let's continue the successes we've had in two thousand and twenty-four into two thousand and twenty-five. First of all, I would like to address a fairly new, fairly important policy at Clifton High School. As most board members and parents know, a full rollout of the classroom cellphone ban policies imminent at CHS. I'm not speaking to inform anyone about the details of the policy that will come in due time for administration. I simply want to make it known that student leaders at CHS are making every effort to make sure the rollout is smooth. The week of the policy rollout, there will be student-made videos broadcast on our very own morning news that explain the policy in more detail and some of the benefits of a cellphoneless classroom to students. These videos will work to improve student attitude, which is likely currently apathetic towards the policy. Second of all, Dr. Obertozzi and I met with the superintendent's ambassadors earlier this month. It was a productive meeting, and we discussed many important topics for the upcoming year. A brief synopsis of this meeting will follow. One of the first issues was the morning breakfast at CHS. We received some complaints and are now starting to open both K-three and K-five around the same time to alleviate some congestion in the morning and make sure that all of the students can sit with their friends and whoever they wish. We at CHS are very proud of our extensive breakfast program that serves hot breakfast as well as grab-and-go options to hundreds of students daily. Secondly, a focus group was created to try and get CHS students to check their emails more often. We noticed that some students fail to check their emails because they feel, they may feel like there is no need or because it is cluttered with Google Classroom notifications. We are working to inform students that if they don't check their emails, they may be missing out on valuable information such as scholarship opportunities. Finally, we are also going to be working to iron out some of the Kinks for Wellness Days in the upcoming marking periods. To finish off, I want to give a quick recap of the upcoming sports and events for CHS. There will be a boys' hockey match tomorrow at six PM at American Dream, and wrestling and basketball both have games this Saturday. Also, CHS Theater will be performing Sweeney Todd for the Spring Musical. I'm proud to say that more details will be forthcoming at the next meeting regarding that, that will be in March. Thank you all, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mark. Next, we have our annual audit presentation. Am I right? Is he here or no? Okay, we will come back to him, and we'll go to committee reports. Our first committee report is residency, security, and technology. Commissioner, Vice President Santiago, can you please read the minutes from that meeting?
Thank you, President Paris. So, the residency, security, and technology committee meeting met on Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Seems like such a long time. The meeting took place on Thursday, the tenth, and began at five oh four PM. In attendance from administration were Mr. Jengaro, Mr. Doctor, Ms. Zanola, Mr. Mountain. Board of Education members in attendance were myself, Commissioner Canova, Commissioner Siano, and President Paris. Mr. Doctor explained that since the last committee meeting, fourteen additional Clifton students have been identified as non-Clifton residents and have been removed from the district. Since July first, the district has removed students costing the district one million fifty-nine thousand seventy-two dollars. This is from fifty-one Clifton students and six PCTI students removed from district responsibility. Ms. Zanola stated that the drill of the month was conducted successfully throughout the district. She also mentioned that our Transportation Department will be going through a ninety-day-free trial of a school bus security system, which includes video recording and real-time viewing in emergent situations. This trial will be on ten buses, and the results of the trial will be brought to the committee. Mr. Mountain updated the committee that technology planning for Pope Paul Building is currently being developed and designed. A discussion occurred concerning search history on students' Chromebooks. An issue arose concerning periodic removal from the search history. This has been resolved and will be, would not be reoccurring. Finally, Mr. Mountain provided an overview of the network security features in regard to student use. He briefed the committee on workings of the filter layer, relay layer, and classroom layer. The meeting was adjourned at five forty-five PM. Any questions? Thank you, President Paris.
Thank you, Vice President Santiago. Commissioner Mejia, please read the Student Liaison Committee minutes, please.
So, the minutes were taken on December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at eleven AM up until twelve PM at the JFK Auditorium at Clifton High School. Present were President Allen Paris, the Chair Tania Suarez, as well as myself, Richard Mejia, as well as Assistant Superintendent of Finance Ahmed Shahada and Janina Kucha Lovich. We also had our CHS Principal Ahmed Hamda, as well as our Vice Principal Christopher Keegan, and as well as our student, our student teacher, Reem Ibrahim. I'm not going to name off the students who were involved, but some of the minutes, we had welcome remarks. Mr. Hamda and Commissioner Suarez welcomed the attendees. We briefly talked about the cellphone policy, which raised concerns about the new cellphone policy that we do have. Mr. Hamda explained this policy, phone pouches will be installed in every classroom, and the students must place their phones in them at the start of each semester. He described it as a revolutionary approach to limiting distractions. One student noted that many classmates are unhappy with this change, and Mr. Hamda did acknowledge that students' concerns and feelings. Mr. Shahada mentioned that similar policies may soon be required across all schools by the governor's office. Another student brought up safety concerns during fire drills and lockdowns, noting students need access to phones to contact parents. Mr. Hamda did reassure students that phones would still be accessible between classes and said he would revise security procedures for full-scale evacuations. Another student asked about phone use during assemblies, and Mr. Hamda stated that phones should be put away as installing holders for seven hundred students in the auditorium is almost impractical. Mr. Hamda also emphasized that the goal of the policy is to prepare students for real, real-world exceptions, where no phone use will be permitted in bathrooms. We then briefly discussed senior parking, where a student requested reinstating assigned senior parking spots, citing confusion when spots are taken mid-year. Mr. Hamda explained that removing assigned spots reduced overall issues and ensured every senior with a parking permit could park. Mr. Keegan did note that this was the student's first complaint of the year, whereas parking has been a daily issue previously. Some of the dress code and coat concerns was expressed by a student who showed frustration over rules requiring lockers for coats, especially for bus students who need to visit their lockers at the end of the day. Mr. Hamda acknowledged the inconvenience and said exceptions have been communicated to teachers to allow students to wear their coats during cold weather, particularly for freshmen. He will continue to reinforce this. Ms. Kucha Lovich did suggest revisiting the dress code to address outdated policies that we do have. Another student asked for clarification on defining sleeper, sleepwear such as sweatpants or flannels. Mr. Hamda said dress code enforcement focuses on clothing that impacts safety or learning. Some positive feedback on some of the deadlines we have. A student praised the change from seven-thirty AM due dates, noting that it has been extremely helpful. Another thing that we briefly talked about was a bike rack request. A student requested an additional bike rack, and Mr. Hamda agreed to add this to the list of improvements that we need at the high school. Another one we do have is student photos in real time. A student noted that outdated sixth-grade photos are still being used, and Mr. Hamda acknowledged that disconnected between lures, our photographers, and real time, and we will see options to address this issue in the near future. We then briefly went over pep rallies, requesting bringing back pep rallies that we no longer hold, noting other schools have them. Mr. Hamda mentioned the PBSIS team is reviewing this and suggesting involving Trevor in the planning progress. Mr. Paris does recall after pep rallies being after school, and they were a little bit less chaotic, and Mr. Hamda agreed to consider this model, possibly quarterly. Some of the bus activities we had, a student asked about transportation options for students who stay late for activities. Mr. Hamda explained logistical challenges, buses cannot reach the high school up until four thirty. Cheerleading, some of the practices are at the annex daily, and Ms. Kucha Lovich agreed that additional buses are needed to address this issue. We then talked about the Linkit usage. Some students questioned the need for a Linkit, suggesting Google Forms as a better alternative, but Ms. Kucha Lovich did explain that it is essential for statewide mandated assessments, tracking growth, and decision-making on the student support, such as AEPs and other types of qualifications. Then we did briefly talk about motivating younger students, proposing creating a club where high school students can visit younger students to inspire and motivate them. A student also mentioned that we do have something similar, which is called Heroes and Cool Kids. Ms. Kucha Lovich suggested revisiting a former middle school program called This Is Your Life, which could collaborate with Heroes and Cool Kids. We then talked about lunch options. A student asked for better lunch options for students who skip lunch periods. Mr. Hamda said co-options are currently available and will aim to implement alternatives like a hot grabbing-go cart possibly in the main office. We then talked about bathroom lines. A student mentioned long bathroom lines. Mr. Hamda said that the electronic hall pass system and new cellphone policy should help alleviate this congestion. We then talked about spring sports transportation. A student raised issues with busing for spring sports, particularly to the stadium. Mr. Hamda suggested staggering times to improve transportation logistics, and Mr. Hamda did note that moving weight room slash hoop ball practices to the morning should help resolve this issue. We then briefly talked about teacher support, where two students praised teachers for caring about students' well-being and explaining the why behind lessons, specifically Mr. Henry. Ms. Kucha Lovich reinforced that all teachers should focus on teaching the why. We then briefly talked about college preparation, where a student shared positive experience with a teacher structuring classes like a college course. Another student requested better promotion for pre-college programs, sharing her experience with NYU and Berkeley programs. Mr. Hamda said counselors play a key role, but changing counselors throughout the four years may cause some inconsistencies. Finally, Ms. Kucha Lovich mentioned possibly creating a webpage for free programs and suggested implementing a crowdsourcing page for students. We then had closing remarks by Board President Allen Paris, where he thanked all the attendees for the import, for their input and participation.
Thank you, Commissioner Mejia. Anyone questions? Commissioner Canova?
So, I have four different questions. So, one is on the bathroom lines. So, we mentioned last time that there was only one bathroom open, I believe, at the high school at one point. Has that been alleviated?
Yes, sir. The bathrooms are all open. And what Mr. Mejia mentioned about the new pass program has been very successfully implemented at our middle schools, and will be going to our high school shortly.
Okay. For the dress code, I know we just adopted a policy that splits up K to five and six to twelve. So, did they want to take a look at that and, and make changes to that? Is that what they're referring to in this?
Specifically, we're referring to sleepwear, like flannel pajamas.
Oh, okay.
Not in the dress code. And the question was, could they be, so that's still, has been brought to committee yet?
All right. Pep rallies are the comment. I remember having mine, right now where we have that parking off to the right of the gym, above that, there was a field there, and we had ours outside there. So, I don't know if that's something they still do or whatnot, but that's, I remember that's where we had ours. The last thing is the cellphone policy. I know we have five-five-one-six. It says students can keep it on their person or put it in a locker, and I know the state says that basically everyone needs a policy now, but do we actually have a policy that we rolled? I know we've talked about the pouches, but do we actually put them into policy?
Mr. Shahada could comment on this.
The governor's office is going to be issuing, well, the law's already passed. The DOE is going to be issuing guidance that's going to take effect nine-one. Reading the law is going to be very strict, but they said they're going to give us a lot of leeway on each individual district. So, I'm assuming we're going to get something in hand, I would say, April, May, and then we'd have to roll it out to our administrators to figure out how we're going to implement it.
All right. So, we're just doing this preemptively?
Correct.
Not that I remember.
No, this is done administratively.
Okay.
To the high school.
Mr. Canova, if I may, I just want to reiterate, and I know you know this, but for the public who are listening, the policy is written to be more of a general kind of thing, and then the regulations or the superintendent's administrative regulations are more specific. So, the policy is, yeah, we basically don't want to see the phone, but at the middle schools, they're using, they're leaving them in their backpacks and putting them in the front of the room, and that, I've heard reported success. So, while the policy may be general, we don't know what the DOE is going to say. The DOE might just say, phones aren't allowed. That could be problematic. I think they're going to give us some leeway on how we enforce it and how we do that, so.
Yeah, I saw some, some people posting online, they interviewed some students, and it's not the case here, because we don't pay with phones, but some students are paying with phones for things. An instruction was happening based on the phones, I think, one of those, those applications where you, I guess, like vote on A, B, C, D during a classroom or something. I don't know if that's anything we do, maybe take a poll from the teachers and see if we're even using that.
Although we have the one-to-one Chromebooks, there are some teachers who will have students utilize a cellphone as part of any given lesson on any given day. We're going to have to get away from that under the new policy. Now, our thing was always, listen, if we're using it for learning, it's okay. But I think most reasonable people would agree that cellphones have become a distraction, to say the least.
Yeah.
Even for the adults, right?
Yeah, I, what I read about the state, using it for, as a learning tool in the class would be an exception.
Okay.
So, I think they mentioned that in their outline. Anything else?
Yep.
Yes, Dr. Danny.
Well, as an educator, I can say about the, you know, cellphone policy. I mean, again, it, it works if, you know, everybody's on board with it, because if some teachers are, you know, a little lax or whatever, and I know that, you know, there'll be guidance coming, forthcoming, and then obviously maybe policy created from that. But, you know, again, the kids, they get savvy, so they just get the smartwatch, and that's what we're seeing, you know what I mean? They have it connected to that, so. And just to note on pep rallies, because they talked about bringing them back, and we do have them, we have a fall and a spring, and what we do at the high school is we shave off just a few minutes out of every class, and then the pep rally is done in the, the last block. So, everybody kind of goes to the last block and then, you know, dismissed from there. So, I don't know if that's like a possibility or just bringing that up as a suggestion, you know, since I wasn't at the meeting. And then just want to say to Janina, yeah, Linkit, you know, we use it in our school, and it does provide like a lot of data, and it really helps with understanding where students are struggling. So, unfortunately, I know Google Forms is better, but it doesn't provide as much data as Linkit does, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. President, one, one point. So, I remember we went to Patterson, there's a school in Patterson, and we presented on security. And we said that in the bathrooms on the stall, when you close it, there's a QR code in there that brings you to a see something, say something. So, if a student didn't want to, in class, be typing something that they know what's going on or happened, we were, we were allowing them to use their mobile phones to do that. With this phone policy, they're not going to be able to do that any longer. Is there a way to get that sort of private mode of students being able to report things that they feel like they want to keep to themselves?
Well, they'll be using them in, but they can use them in between classes.
No, they can't.
They can't?
It's, well, the law that the governor signed said, like, not in uncommon areas, not on buses, so we have to, it's really hard to give you an honest answer.
Yeah, I just got to say, I have a feeling that that's going to change. I mean, if we're not going to allow kids to use phones on buses, I mean, I think we're getting a little crazy here. And if I have any discretion in that matter, that just seems a little ridiculous, right? I understand preventing cellphones from being a distraction from learning, but let's face it, they've become a part of our lives, right? And to strip them away, there are adults who have physical addictions, where you take their phone away, God forbid, they leave it in the other room, they start going through withdrawal symptoms. Now, could you imagine? We just took it away from our kids overnight, right? We would need a lot of chewies. We would need a lot of therapy, Doug, so. So, I'm, I'm thinking that governor's been very reasonable with educational policies. I'm, I want to believe that we'll have the discretion that we need to implement the way we see fit, that's best for our district and our kids, I hope.
Commissioner Brunscheck.
Yeah, the last I read of this, the Assembly's bill, four-eight-eight-two, hasn't moved yet. Is that not the case? Did it go up already for a vote? Assembly bill? Been voted on and signed. Thank you.
Commissioner Bassford.
Okay, so as you all know, I'm, don't hide it, I'm going deaf in my, well, I'm almost completely deaf in my left ear. I'm regulating my hearing aids through my cellphone. What happens to a child that uses their cellphone for insulin or, or any kind of electronic things like that? You know, we have to really be careful, and as a mother and as a parent, I am not comfortable with not being able to reach out to my child. So, I'm hoping, when is this supposed to pass by? Do we know when the guidance is coming down, Mr. Shahada?
It's supposed to be implemented September first or September, whatever our first day of school is, September first.
I think those will be exceptions from what I've read so far.
Right, but you have one person have a cellphone, like, I'm just whipping mine up to make it, because I can't hear you guys right now, so I'm making my volume a little louder, like, and I'm playing with my phone, like, he's going to sit next to me going, she's got her phone. You know, we're going to, it's going to be troublesome. It's really going to, it's going to cause a lot of issues, so I hope that we have a voice that we can advocate down there, that, you know.
There's some people at the DOE who are very nice. I think they're going to, they're going to advocate.
But I'm just saying that, you know, I'm sure that we can rally our troops and get, you know, to be reasonable about things, and I'm sure, as a parent, I would want to be able to reach out to my kids.
Once, I'm assuming the State Board will see the guidance at some point, and if I'm able to, I will share it with the administration and get feedback on it.
Commissioner Suarez.
Thank you, President Paris. Regarding technology and IEPs and disabilities, or rather disabilities, usually they are needed for IEPs, so to your point, Commissioner Bassford, I think that'd be a great avenue for parents to advocate for their child to have technology to support disabilities, because that is necessary, and technology does exist for other supports, so I imagine that can get wrapped up in that as well.
Yeah. Commissioner Siano.
So, what gets me is the notes, right? So, Mr. Hamda emphasized that the goal of the policy is to prepare students for real-world expectation. This is the real world. You not using your phone, like, we don't use our phones here, but they're here, that's the real-world expectation. You're not asking me to put my phone in the back of the room and not have access to it. That's what's throwing me off here. If we're trying to prepare them for the real world, the real world is, you have your phone on you, but you don't use it. That's the real world. That's where, when I think this comes out, I think this discussion's going to be even funner, because I think we're going to be one of the districts that have a lot to say about this. Just going around the room now, it's not even implemented yet, and we're already saying that a lot of us don't agree with this. But that's the one that, if we're preparing the students, this is how you prepare them. You can't use your phone during class. On your way to another class, there's no reason, you, you can't have your phone in your hand. On the bus, there's no reason. During an, an assembly or something, why can't you take a selfie or something? That's what people do now. That's the real world. Right, coming from the selfie king, as I've been announced, right? It's just like, that's what people do. That's the real-world expectation, so I just think this is going to be a very fun conversation when the time comes.
President Santiago, then Commissioner Suarez.
Yeah, as we've been talking about, I think there's probably going to be a bunch of iterations from here to when we get anything to even then start this conversation again. I mean, we should just wait and see. We're coming up with common sense stuff. We're not the only common sense people in the world or common sense district. I mean, everybody's going to have the same questions, and who knows what it's going to look like by the time we get to, get to that. But to Commissioner Siano's point, I mean, we say that now, we have teachers here, we have teachers who tell them, don't touch the, ask them, it's being done. That's the whole reason why this is happening. And I think, like, upwards of ninety percent of teachers or NEA members or whatever are in support of this because it's so distracting, but I think there's just a lot of time from here to there, and we can just discuss it then.
Commissioner Suarez.
Thank you. Just regarding students having it, I know what, a conversation that was part of the Liaison Committee that actually was in connection to bathroom issues was, students were texting one another, meet me here, making lines longer, making bathroom visits longer. So, that was part of the conversation as well, just, just to give you another insight as to how it has become a distraction outside of learning.
Mr. Paris. Thank you. Yes.
And just my last comment on this, not to belabor it, but Ms. Suarez, that exact example you just gave is something that is prevented with what we're utilizing at the middle schools, and I can't remember the name of the product right now. If anybody knows, it could shout it out.
Smart Pass.
Smart Pass, thank you. So, Smart Pass is a, is a program that we piloted at our middle schools this year. In short, it's a pass system where a student needs to leave the room, say to go to the restroom, they go to their teacher, they scan out, go, scan with their ID or as a code?
No, it's right on the computer.
It's on the computer. They go, they come back, scanned back in. Sounds simple, right? But here are some of the crafty things it does. You and I have a problem. We had a bullying incident, or we have a conflict. Administration can put in the system that you and I can't be out together. So, if you're in the restroom and I ask my teacher to go to the bathroom and I go to scan out, it's going to pop up on the screen saying you have to wait. That's, I mean, that, that alone is something that, that we can utilize for bullying, anytime we have a cease and desist between students who are having a problem. Or they just happen to know that Joe and Mark go to the bathroom third period every day because they're fooling around. Who knows what that crew would be doing, but, so when Mark's out, Joe can't get out, right? And of course, there's always discretion if it's an emergency, Joe's jumping up and down, I got to go, I got to go. The teacher has discretion, but, and it does a lot of other things, but that was the thing that sold me. And just in my, when I was at Columbus a few weeks ago, just in some informal conversations I had with teachers, you know, teachers typically, they're done with new things, like, they don't give us anything more new, except this, overwhelmingly, I heard positive things about. So, and that's coming to the high school.
Okay. All right. Moving on, we're going to go to our presentation this evening, which is our annual audit presentation. Mr. Lurch.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Okay, so I'm here to present the results of the audit, which was just completed for the year ending June twenty-four. I'll give you a brief presentation. If anybody has any questions, by all means, you can stop me, or we can wait to the end and kind of go through that. So, I will start off by saying that the district received unmodified opinions on its financial statements. statements, including single audit, internal controls and compliance in accordance with governmental auditing standards, and single audit controls and compliance. What that generally means is that there were three opinions that were presented in the audit report that everyone should have received. The very first opinion is the overall opinion on the financial statements. The next opinion is the governmental auditing standards opinion on internal controls and compliance. And then, because we meet certain thresholds on expenditures, and I'll get into that in a second, of state and federal programs, it requires a, and it triggers a single audit, what's identified as a single audit. So there were no significant deficiencies noted in the internal controls during the audit. I think that, and we'll talk about this at the very end, we'll talk about the two comments we have in the report. One thing I do want to mention before we talk about single audit a little bit and some of the other testing items, is just to reiterate again that the Board of Education received the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting from the 2003 audit report that was submitted, and the plan is to submit the 2024 report as well. So that's terrific to see as well. That is a great accomplishment. So going into state and federal single audits, just a brief overview, what does that really mean? It really means that anytime you have expenditures which exceed $750,000 in either federal or state programs, it triggers additional testing. Really what that means is that we need to now go and not only do the financial testing that we do, and we do compliance testing for New Jersey laws, because there's plenty of them, as you all understand and know, when it comes to procurement and those type of items, but when we do a single audit, we also have to then deal with the state and federal compliance supplements. So, $750,000 is, actually, it's a very low number, just to kind of give you an understanding as to where we are in Clifton. Clifton expended more than $156 million on the state side. So of course, that's triggering these major programs. A major program for Clifton is elevated up to $3 million. So we have to look at any program that's in excess of $3 million. We go through a risk assessment, we determine which programs we identify as high risk, and then we'll test those programs, and we can replace low risks with some other smaller programs. So we tested state aid, which is what we're typically going to test, that's the majority of the money that's coming through the system, general state aid, and then we also tested the FICA component. That's the state side. Federal side, you had 1 point, you had $38 million of expenditures through the federal programs. Here we tested, which is probably at the tail end here, the ARPA money, the American Rescue Plan money through the COVID periods. The district did receive over $39 million of those funds over that period of time. So this is now really the last of those expenditures. The majority of that money needed to be expended or committed by the end of the school year. But we did test then, we did test the remaining components of the ARPA money, the ESR money, the CAREs, and we also looked at the food service and IDA programs. And so there's a significant amount of testing that goes into those federal programs, and I'm happy to say that we had no deficiencies, no compliance issues, there's nothing reported. Because if we did have deficiencies of issues during the audit process, they would have clearly been reported. It's requirement as part of the process. So that's a huge accomplishment as well. Moving along, capital projects, obviously, the board knows, you've had a tremendous amount of expenditures, based on the capital project, that $168 million project that the board has been adhering to or spending through. The majority of the expenditures in that project occurred during our fiscal year of audit. Over $88 million had been expended through the financial statements for the fiscal year ending June of 24. The balance that remained as of June of 24 was only $27 million of remaining balance of the 168 million. I'm sure that number is much lower today, since we're almost seven months past that reporting financial statement period that we're talking about, which was June. So there was a tremendous amount of activity through that, and I think I talked about that a little bit last year as well. So with such a large procurement, you've got to deal with all the purchasing, the contracts and the public contract law. There's a lot of hurdles to go through, a lot of hoops. And, you know, Clifton's come through it and come out really looking very good from that perspective as well. It's very nice to say it's unusual, especially with the amount of activity that, as I indicated, has gone through that process. One of the other programs we operate is the food service for the children of the district. Here we had a loss of $960,000 in the fiscal year, but still the net position was at $5.9 million. So that's the net position available in that enterprise fund. Talked a little bit about COVID. What I want to talk about before I talk about the two comments or recommendations is just talk about fund balance a little bit. And that's really, I'm going to go into, and I don't know if the board has the report or not, doesn't really matter for me, but I'm going to look at the, at page 72 of the report. And page 72 of the report is the budgetary comparison schedule. And this is really your operating budget. And it's the operating fund. How did we do? We collect most of the monies, goes through the operating fund if it's not designated into a separate fund. And the expenditures, and how does that relate? What happened during the year? So during the year, the district had a net change in fund balance to the positive of So it was a very large increase in the total equity. Total equity or fund balance went from $24 million to $44 million at the end of the year. And then, how do we allocate? What is the $44 million made up of? How does it get distributed or broken down? So, we are limited, the board is limited to retaining unreserved or free balance. 2% of your expenditures are our modifications that play into that dollar value. Basically speaking, 2% is about $4.5 million you can retain, but then there are exceptions to the rule if we don't budget certain revenue line items. And that's how we got to 6.2 million, relatively unchanged from the year before. So 6.2 million of the 44 is what's left as a free balance. Then I'm going to just go up the scale here, I want to go through the progression. We have surplus which is designated, meaning that it's utilized in the budget, which in the current year that we're in. So right now, we're in the 24, 25 school year. $966,000 of fund balance is being utilized to balance the budget. Incumbrances of 5.4 million. Incumbrances are simply goods and services that were ordered, not yet delivered or performed. A prime example would be our audit contract. So we have a contract with the Board of Education. We're not performing those services until after the year end, but you're reserving those monies and knowing that we have contracts or obligations that are out there that have to be satisfied once those services are performed. The next item is unemployment, relatively unchanged from the year before, $241,000. It's just money that's set aside for future unemployment claims. This has been in abeyance for a while as well. It really got tied into the COVID period again. The state had suspended all unemployment claim payments from school districts, and I think they're still trying to figure out whether or not they're going to use their remaining COVID funds to satisfy any of those outstanding claims that could be out there. But irregardless, there's $241,000 that's set aside for future claims, if you need to make those. Then we're going to go up into the reserves, the maintenance reserve. So the maintenance reserve, obviously, as it's indicated, it's, the idea is to be able to set aside funds to maintain the facilities. Last year, we ended the year with $2,610,000 in maintenance reserve. This year, we ended the year with $3.4 million in maintenance reserve. It's basically up 1.4 million, and really that's up from the amount of money that was transferred at the end of the fiscal year '24. So as board members, you should remember that in June, there's a resolution that's being presented on an annual basis, which the business administrator puts forth and says, excess earnings that we have during the fiscal year, we'd like to re-divert or divert some of those excess funds into an either an emergency reserve, a maintenance reserve, or capital reserve. And so that's how that got increased by the 1.4 million, based on that resolution. The maximum that you can retain there is 8.2 million. So we're, you know, we're not at the maximum number at this point yet. Relatively easy to get at the maintenance reserve, can go through the budget process, or if there's additional things that happen during the year, then you can appropriate surplus to do some of those improvements. The last item, as we go through the progression, is the capital reserve, and this is the reserve that's set aside for facility improvements. And every district in the state is utilizing, as you should. Last year, when we were here, we had a total capital reserve balance of roughly $10 million. This year, it's increased by $18 million to $28 million. So that's where the bulk of that money is now at this point. Of the $28 million, roughly $8 million is being utilized in the current year. So it was appropriated when you developed your 24, 25 budget. So that's being, right now, being utilized, being spent down. So in essence, really, we're starting going forward now with roughly $20 million in capital reserve, depending upon what happens during the year, if you have any other emergent needs, or if you do a resolution and you appropriate additional funds into that capital reserve. That capital reserve is limited by your long-range facility plan. Right now, the one that I have, and it's showing at a maximum of around $40 million. So you're not, you know, you're not there yet. But that's a healthy surplus and a healthy reserve. So I think financially, you're very sound, clearly, you're on good footing. I think we have two comments in here, none of a major magnitude, but comments nonetheless that we put into the report. And those you would find on a smaller report, which is the administrative findings, finance, compliance, and performance reporting. The first one deals with accounts payable, accounts payable reporting, and how that reflects with what's being supported in the general ledger. So without getting too complicated on it, the general ledger is the accounting books of the district, and then what we have is subsidiary reports that tie into some of the control accounts. So a control account would be an accounts payable or an encumbrance. What we're looking to look at is that, we're also going to test those balances, but we want to make sure that the balances that are being reported in the financial statements, the board secretary, the board, the general ledger, are supported by a detailed reporting ledger, a detailed list. And we had some discrepancies in the amount that was reported in the general fund, the capital project fund, and the special revenue fund. After talking to the administration and realizing what happened the year before with some of the issues that you had, I think really the director, or probably the biggest issue was part of the rollover that occurred last year, when we had some compromised data. And so that, I think, is what's reflective in what we've had. We've done the testing of those balances, and we certainly didn't have any exceptions on the testing, but internally, those reports need to agree. And I think they're fully aware of it, and I would be, I certainly would not expect to see that as a report item next year as well. So I think that's an anomaly. One of the other items that we test is in student activities. You know, we go through and we test the expenditures. This becomes very troublesome for Board of Education's because it's not really being controlled at the, at the board office. And so what we're doing is we're testing collections and we're testing expenditures as well. And this is prevalent really in almost every school, and I think this is part of, again, the residuals of COVID. So when we did some of our testing, what we've noticed is that some payments were made for student activity-type products, which is, which is the most important thing, that we're not using student funds for non-student activity expenditures. But what's happening is, is that, and some of those expenditures were charged on a credit card of an individual at the school, and the product was mailed to the individual's home. So any kind of, you know, goods or services that are being ordered ideally should be done through the student activity account. It shouldn't be on a personal credit card and then look to get reimbursed, and those goods and services that are, of course, are going to be delivered to the home address. But, you know, like I said, we're having a hard time, we're seeing it almost in every single district as well. That's one of those things that, you know, we have to relearn again, that, you know, we're beyond this COVID period, we need to now get back to what is so-called normal, if there is a normal. But, so those are the two comments I have, and I think that, you know, in summation, clearly, when you look at the size of the transactions, as I said, 88 million in just in that one particular fund, and, you know, we're talking a tremendous amount of expenditures and transactions and activity, I think that, again, you know, the board is run very well, and you're certainly in fine financial footing as well. So I think everything's looking up for the Clifton Board of Education. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lurch. Yes, any questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Commissioner Knoblauch.
I have a question on the personal accounts. So is that referring to if I'm a teacher or principal and I purchase something for the school on my personal account, and then I'm asking for an expense report? Is that what you're...
It's not really what I'm referring to, but it could be that too, though, because that's really prohibited as well. So ideally, what we're looking for is that any kind of student expenses are being transacted through the student books. And what we're talking about is student activity-related events, or basketball, or baseball, or any other student activity-related events. Those advisors made purchases on their own credit cards and got reimbursed. So we tested, we found three exceptions, none of them were material. I mean, it's not like we looked at something and we saw, you know, somebody who was, who was doing a class trip to DC and it got reimbursed $60,000 on a credit card because, you know, that was a more efficient way to do that. That would raise all kinds of bells and whistles, and we'd have a different conversation. We're doing a random sample, we saw three of them, nothing of a significant dollar amount. We just felt that it was important to let you know that this is something that needs to be dealt with at best you can.
Is that something now they go to the administration for?
I was actually just going to speak on that. It was actually one of our clubs that ordered something for that specific club, and I think it was 100 bucks, 50 bucks, 70, it was minimal, nominal in the grand scheme of things. We have since then implemented new guidance to all the administrators, everything, even student activity-related, it's running through my hands. So I touch every single reimbursement that is going out. It is time-consuming, but just so we don't end up here again. So we are in a much better place, and Danny, Dr. Robert Tozzi and the administration have been extremely supportive.
Is PBSIS handled that way too now? Oh, okay.
Mr. Paris. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Lurch, good to see you again.
Nice seeing you too.
Thank you so much for that report. While I have a couple principals here in the audience, guys, what you hear is why we talk to you about these things. It seems minimal, but it matters because it's audited, right? And student activities, Mr. Lurch, just for everybody, you mentioned it, but I'd like you to mention again, it is something that is an issue in every, almost every district, correct?
It's there to some magnitude, it's certainly there.
Yeah, it seems to be always something with student activities, because as you mentioned, it's somewhat out of our control, but I am confident in the protocols that we put in place to prevent that. So for me and most of the audience who understood about 10% of what you said tonight...
10% is good.
And I went to school for a long time. We're in pretty good shape?
You are, and I think, you know, from both aspects, right? So fiscally, when you look at that surplus and that capital reserve, you know, that's terrific. You know, you did a big project, right? And so now you're going to have to deal with all the other projects that come along, and for Clifton, you know, those are larger dollar values. So somebody may look at, you know, $20 million and say, "Oh, that's a tremendous number." But if you're going to compare that to a K-8 district, well, yeah, it would be, but it's all relative in size. So, you know, I think that that's the key, right? You're able to then maintain and improve the services you're trying to provide, the facilities. But then from an accounting perspective and a transactional perspective, again, it's, this is not an easy report to come up with, with the final results of where you are. You know, it's a tremendous amount of time. I mean, you're talking, you're talking over 400 hours of man and woman time. So, yeah, it's a lot of, a lot of time, a lot of documents we look at, so.
And, Mr. Lurch, last thing, when you say the two recommendations, that neither of them are material, that means that a material recommendation would be a major flaw. Is that another way that you would say it? Is that fair?
Yeah, that is a fair way to describe it. From my perspective, you know, material could be two things. One is a dollar value materiality, right? So, but really, what's more important is a systemic issue, right? So we have a control problem that we're seeing that could lead to a larger issue financially, right? So that, and if that was the case, it would be sitting in your, in your gas opinion, and we'd either have some kind of compliance or an internal control violation that, you know, that we're not adhering to, that we feel unchecked could lead to a larger issue. And so these things are smaller, and they're only in the AMR. And so that's where you're seeing them, you're not seeing them in those other opinions. If there was a real problem, you would go to that gas opinion, and you'd read through that and look that there's no issues on compliance or internal controls being reported. So that's important to see as well.
As the superintendent, I'm very pleased to hear this audit report, and I believe the board... the board is, too. Of course, you guys can speak for yourselves, but on behalf of the administration, I want to thank Mr. Shahada, our Assistant Superintendent for Business, his entire department, for almost a flawless audit on almost a $300 million budget in a district that might be the 10th or 11th largest district in the state, 1,800 staff, 11,000 students. Outstanding job, Mr. Shahada, and grateful to have you on our team. Thank you very, very much.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Lurch.
Thank you, and we do appreciate the opportunity to serve the district as well. So, good night, everyone.
Thank you. We're going to move to public recognition. Mr. Shahadi said we don't have a virtual one today, right?
Correct. I just need a motion from somebody to suspend policy 0167, just the virtual portion, please.
I'll make the motion to suspend 0167.
Motion suspended by Commissioner Basford, seconded by Commissioner Knoblaugh.
All in favor?
So moving to public recognition. Yes.
Well, he can come now. He can come now for public recognition.
You missed it.
He's raising his hand.
Yeah. Mark, you'll come up now, and you can come up at public recognition when he makes the announcement. He's there with his hand up, and I'm, I want him, like...
I have...
No, it's okay. So this is, I guess, directed more to...
Thanks, bud.
We just closed the virtual portion. We got you.
We got you, though.
I need to open the public portion here. So, one moment. This portion of the meeting is open to the residents and non-residents of Clifton for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and are directly related to the operation of the Clifton Public School System. Residents and non-residents are requested to sign the register provided for this purpose and to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments, and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments.
All right. Yeah, so this was just a question, I guess, to, directed towards Mr. Shahada regarding the personal accounts. So you mentioned that the clubs, personally, I do, I'm the president of the investment club, and we purchase snacks to sell, and that is something I purchase through my own personal account and that I get reimbursed for. So moving forward, will that still be allowed, or is that going to be changed?
It is going to be changed, and I am working through that specifically at the high school, because you guys just, it's monstrous over there with 550,000 clubs. So I'm working with Mr. Hamda to try to figure out a way to do it so we are in compliance and none of us go to jail.
Yeah. I understand. So there will be more on that in the future, and if anything, I should talk to Mr. Hamda regarding that policy?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mark. Does anyone like to speak? You want to wait?
Only because I know what you're here to talk about, and you might want to wait for personnel.
Okay. Anyone else?
I appreciate the excitement, though.
Good evening. My name is Martha Andrea Orok, and I'm kindergarten teacher in the district. I'm here to discuss the Clifton Education Association's PEP and FAST programs. PEP, which stands for Public Education Partnership, aims to highlight the achievements of our public schools while fostering a community support and involvement. Families and schools together work for children is simply known as FAST, that's our other program, that encourages family engagement in education, supports academic progress, and promotes a welcoming environment in all our schools. The CEA consists of teachers, paraprofessionals, nurses, guidance counselors, and various other educational support professionals. I would like to take this opportunity to highlight some of our recent events that we have sponsored. These include the Veterans Brunch at Woodrow Wilson, which cost $1,497.88. Cookies with Santa at School 17, where we had a professional photographer offer free photographs with Santa for the families for $1,490.56. Dinner with Santa at School 12, where we provided dinner and handed out a free toy to every child, totaling $3,068.77. Additionally, we have been committed to donate $2,000 worth of food for the little, for the three free little pantries in Clifton that, for February, that we saw this great initiative brought up at one of your previous board meetings. Furthermore, we are proud to support the drama clubs at both middle schools. So we are here to announce that we are providing all senior citizens free admission to our middle schools drama shows for the spring, and we encourage everyone to come out and enjoy the performances of our talented students this year. As you can see what we did in just in November and December, how the CEA and our volunteers are here to donate our time and create a fun, welcoming event for Clifton community. Sorry. We have many more events planned throughout the year, and we hope to see many of our families enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to approach the podium?
Of course.
Good evening to all. My name's Lori LaLama, and I'm the president of the CEA. Tonight's discussion has to do with immigration. There are the critical steps school districts and staff in New Jersey should take to protect students and ensure compliance with the state and federal laws regarding ICE, Immigration and Customs Enforcement agents. These are the key points. Immediate notification. If ICE agents arrive at a school, staff should immediately inform the school administrator and the district superintendent. Verify credentials and purpose. Staff should request information from ICE agents about their credentials, the purpose of their visit, and any documentation authorizing school access. Warrant requirements. ICE agents cannot enter a school without a judicially signed warrant or a recognized exception to a warrant. Warrants must be viewed by the school district's legal counsel to determine their validity. A legitimate warrant must be signed by a judge and specify the correct, I highlight correct, date and location. Administrative immigration warrants, which are not signed by a judge, do not grant ICE agents access to school property. Policy updates. School districts are encouraged to revise policies to protect students during registration and while on school grounds. Superintendents and school boards should consult legal counsel to prepare for changes in immigration policies. The CEA will be sending membership important information to ensure proper handling of such situations. Schools should be proactively communicate policies and updates for families in their preferred language to build trust and keep them informed. These measures aim to safeguard students' rights, ensure compliance with the law, and provide a safe and supportive educational environment. The associations throughout the state recognize our obligation to our students and to their parents, who entrust us with their education and their safety every day. We will never be deterred from standing up for the students in New Jersey. All right. Ahor en Espanol. Ay, Dios mío. Okay. Estos son los pasos críticos que los distritos escolares y el personal en Nuevo Jersey deben tomar para proteger a los estudiantes y garantizar el cumplimiento de las leyes estatales y federales con respecto a los agentes de hielo. Estos son los puntos claves. Notificación. Si los agentes de ICE llegan a una escuela, el personal debe informar de mediante el administrador escolar y superintendente del distrito. El personal debe solicitar información a los agentes de ICE sobre los credenciales y el propósito de su visita y cualquier documentación que autorice el acceso a la escuela. Los agentes de ICE no pueden ingresar a una escuela sin una orden judicial firmando por un juez o una excepción reconocida al orden. Los órdenes deben ser revisadas por asesor legal del distrito escolar por, para determinar si valdrá... Dos minutos, por favor. Gracias. Una orden legítima debe estar firmada por un juez y especificar la fecha y ubicación correctas. Las órdenes administrativas de inmigración que no están firmados por un juez no conceden a los agentes de ICE acceso a la propiedad escolar. Se alienta a los distritos escolares a revisar las políticas para proteger a los estudiantes durante el proceso de inscripción y mientras estén en los terrenos de las, de las escuelas. Los superintendentes y las juntas escolares deben consultar con asesores legales para prepararse ante posibles cambios en la política de inmigración. La Asociación de Educación de Clifton enviará información importante a sus miembros para garantizar el manejo adecuado en estas situaciones. Las escuelas deben comunicar de manera proactiva las políticas a las familias de su idioma preferido para generar confianza y mantenerlas informadas. Estas medidas tienen como objetivo proteger los derechos de los estudiantes, garantizar el cumplimiento de la ley, y ofrecer un interno educativo seguro y de apoyo. Reconocemos nuestra obligación hacia nuestros estudiantes y hacia sus padres, quienes confían en nosotros para su educación y seguridad todos los días. Nunca dejaremos de defender a los estudiantes en Nuevo Jersey. Gracias.
Anyone else, anyone else like to speak this evening?
I'm seeing no motion to close.
Motion to close by Commissioner Basford, seconded by Commissioner Mejia.
All in favor?
We're going to move to adoption of minutes from the December 5 meeting, and I'm also going to couple that with the January 2 meeting. I do have a statement concerning the January 2 meeting. I'd like to state for the record that an amendment was made to the minutes from the organizational meeting, which was the January 2 meeting. This amendment is reflected in the minutes we're approving tonight and is also notated in the board secretary's office. The item, amendment was under item B1, Professional Services, Section 3 Appointments, Appointment of Board Secretary and Assistant Board Secretary, Commissioner Suarez abstained from voting on the reappointment of Ahmed Shahada. So looking for a motion to approve those.
Motion, second.
Motion by Commissioner Brunsack, seconded by Commissioner Mejia. Roll call, Mr. Shahada.
Ms. Basford?
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack? Yes. Mr. Knoblaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Danny?
Yes.
Ms. Mejia?
Yes.
Ms. Siano?
Yes.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
President Perez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Dr. Robert Tozzi.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to apologize to the commissioners and community for being a few minutes tardy tonight. I was on the phone with a parent. It just took a little longer than expected, so my apologies for being late. I want to thank all of those who came out to our first strategic planning meeting on January 9. We had a great turnout of staff, a variety of stakeholders who came out, parents and community members, to identify the strengths of our district and the areas where we need improvement. And we're not shy to admit that there are certainly areas where we need to improve. So thank all of you for coming out, and I strongly encourage, if you can, to please come out to our next meeting, which is the second of three scheduled meetings, which will take place on February 6 at 7:00 p.m. at Clifton High School. If you're at the first meeting, we hope to see you again. If you couldn't make it, that's okay. You're still more than welcome to come to the next one. If you can't make the next one, come to the third one. We would love to hear your voice. And also, thank you to, Ms. Orok spoke tonight about the PEP and the FAST grants from CEA. So thank you to, to Ms. Orok and the CEA for not only providing all of these things for our students and families, but they also provided the refreshments that night for our strategic planning meeting. So thank you very much for that. More importantly, for all the things you do for our students. Continuing on with my report, I'm pleased to report that our referendum projects are almost all complete. There are still a couple big things going on, like the Woodrow Wilson, excuse me, the Christopher Columbus auditorium. But most of the items left are some of the smaller things, like electrical components that are needed for a few schools. We need PSE and G to do a switch over, and they do that on their own time, on their own schedule. But we anticipate final completion of our referendum projects by the summer of 2025. So let me take that and put that into perspective. This community on April 20, 2021, voted overwhelmingly to approve what at the time was the largest referendum in the history of New Jersey, $168 million, to improve the district's facilities. Since then, we have upgraded the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems in every educational space in the district. We've renovated every bathroom in the district, not only to make them look aesthetically pleasing, but to be ADA compliant. ADA is the American Disabilities Act. We've completed building enhancements such as school security vestibules at every school. We've completed enterprise-level surveillance cameras in all buildings, both exterior and interior. And when I say we've completed, they'll all be done by summer of '25. We've upgraded our emergency notification systems and PA systems in all our buildings. Both middle school auditoriums completely renovated. As I mentioned, Columbus is in, is in progress right now. And if you haven't seen the completed Woodrow Auditorium, it came out beautiful. And Columbus is also going to be pretty amazing, a nice place for our students and staff and community members to, to come out and join us for a show or for any event. An addition of an elevator at CCMS. It will be done by summer of '25. A state-of-the-art weight room at the stadium. A new turf baseball field and soccer field at Woodrow Wilson Middle School with the addition of a fieldhouse. Those of you who remember what our varsity baseball field looked like before that, it was a little scary. And boiler upgrades in several buildings, which definitely came in handy this week, for sure. And again, a line I always use, nobody really cares about the boilers until a week like this, and one goes down. There are other projects that were completed. Those were the biggies. And it's amazing the amount of work that was accomplished during that time. I thank the Board of Education and previous board members for their support. I thank all of our faculty and staff for their patience. Some, more than others, were inconvenienced depending on the school. So really fantastic stuff. Some other good news, I was recently informed that Mr. Andy Jaeger, the principal of Woodrow Wilson Middle School, has been selected to receive the prestigious New Jersey Music Educator Association School Administrator Award. Mr. Jaeger was nominated and selected because of his significant contributions to music education within our one Clifton community, in our district and beyond, actually. The NJMEA recognized Mr. Jaeger's exceptional dedication. The NJMEA recognized Mr. Jaeger's exceptional dedication to supporting the arts and fostering a thriving music program for our students. So congratulations to Mr. Jaeger. Truly is an inspiring award, and your leadership, if you're out there, Mr. Jaeger... well, I know you're out there, if you're watching, your leadership inspires us all, including me. And it underscores the importance and what this district believes in about arts education and shaping a well-rounded, creative, and accomplished youth group, young people. So congratulations, Mr. Jaeger. We will recognize him at a future... our future awards meeting on February 20th. Thank you. I want to address two more serious issues. The first is, I'm sure... I know our staff have noticed, and I'm sure our board has noticed, and our community has noticed, that there has been a recent uptick in non-credible threats to schools. This is not just occurring in Clifton, this is occurring all over our state and national. Perpetrators are using apps to manipulate their voices and phone numbers to call in fake threats in order to cause a disruption and to scare people. They also want to see what the response is, both on the school districts and then the police's end. I want to assure the community, especially our parents who send their kids to school every day, that we are doing everything in our power to make sure your kids are safe while they're with us. And to our staff, we're doing everything in our power to make sure that you are safe as well. These tactics aren't new, but technology has made it more difficult to apprehend suspects. And artificial intelligence has become more sophisticated, making it more difficult to trace some of these apps and phone numbers and things like that. But any threat we get, whether it's deemed credible or non-credible, is investigated by the Clifton Police Department and additional agencies. I have been assured by the CPD, and I have no reason not to believe, because we have an outstanding relationship with the Clifton Police Department, that they've made progress on some of these threats and some of these investigations. They will continue to pursue these means. We might not hear about it for months, months at a time, and then one day you're going to hear, and I won't forget, because as soon as they make an arrest, we're going to announce it, and we're going to make sure that the community knows that we didn't forget. It's important to know that, as a school district, we respond accordingly. We have protocols that are very clear, but also allow us to be flexible in how we respond. But any threat, we involve the Clifton Police Department before we make any decisions. The Clifton Police, alongside the administration, make the final determination as to whether a threat is credible or non-credible. Sometimes that can be determined in minutes, sometimes it takes hours. But as soon as our school day is disrupted by a threat, we do our very best to try to resume normal school activities as soon as possible, while making sure that everyone is safe and that we're not just... that we follow the proper threat assessments and make sure we do everything that we can do. So it's been a lot. It's very frustrating from the administration's end. I'm sure it's very frustrating from faculty and staff and students that their days are disrupted. It's unfortunate that this is a society that we live in, that people do this for fun. But we will always respond, and we will always make sure that our people are safe. We'll do everything we can. So if anybody has any specific concerns or questions, of course, you can always reach out to me, but I'll probably reach out to our Director of Security. So you might as well reach out to her first, anyway. Our Director of Safety and Security is Megan Zenola. She can be reached at 973-874-2223, or at mzenola@cliftonschools.net. It's that old adage, if you see something, say something. It may not... it may seem small, it may seem minimal, but it could be the one thing that we need or that the police need to crack the case. So we're aware, you're aware. Please know we're doing our best, and I'm sorry that we even have to deal with this. And then finally, tonight, I want to take a moment to address a topic that many school leaders have been discussing this week. Ms. Lollama mentioned it, both in English and in Espanol tonight. I will not be doing that. But I think it's important, because I want people to hear from me as the district's educational And the topic is regarding the recent decision by the President of the United States to rescind the Department of Homeland Security's policy that restricted immigration enforcement in schools and other protected areas like hospitals. So prior to this decision, there were areas, like schools and hospitals and other churches, that were deemed safe zones, meaning immigration would not conduct their work in these zones. That policy has been rescinded, but now it is unclear, and I think that's what's causing some people fear. It is unclear whether this policy change means that ICE, or the Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency... we don't know whether they will take action on school property. But just the mere possibility of it happening has caused members of our community, many that I've heard from, to have concern and to have fear. So while I can't do anything about federal policy, what I can do is I can assure you what the Clifton School District is doing about this. So let me do my best to ease some of the concerns. First of all, back in 1982, the United States Supreme Court issued a very famous decision in the case called Plyler v. Doe, which basically said that all children, regardless of immigration status, have the right to a public education. Schools cannot deny a public education based on immigration status. The majority of the U.S. Supreme Court at that time... and by the way, it was a five-to-four decision. One vote the other way, and we'd be living in a much different world. The majority of the Supreme Court at that time was wise enough to know that if we prevented a segment of society from getting an education, that the results for those students who one day would become adults would be devastating, not only for them, but for our society as a whole. Imagine having a segment of our population not receive an education. So because of the United States Supreme Court decision, when a parent registers their child for school... I'm not sure if people know this, but we don't ask whether their citizenship status... we're not permitted to ask their citizenship status. And quite frankly, don't take this the wrong way, we don't really care what your citizenship status is. We're going to educate your children. And the reason why I'm saying that is, so we don't even know if a student is a citizen. We have no record of it if anybody came knocking on the door and asking. So ICE, don't come to Clifton. We don't have the record. We don't know. In addition, there's a federal law called FERPA, or the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. It protects the privacy of student educational records and restricts the sharing of personally identifiable information without parental consent. Now, why is that important? Because although we don't ask if a student is a citizen, there may be something in a student's file that inadvertently indicates whether or not they're a citizen. So what's important to know is that FERPA explicitly supersedes any state or other federal law that conflicts with the attempt to mandate the release of protected student data. Additionally, FERPA generally prohibits schools from sharing student records with immigration or law enforcement. That means generally. That means that unless a parent allows us to, or unless there is an order signed by a judge, we don't share student records with anyone. And you see that lady right there? She's all of four foot 10, 95 pounds, but I know that she almost got arrested in a main office high school because she refused to give up students' records, because there was no warrant signed by a judge. That was you? That was a friend? It was your office, yeah. I remember that day very clearly. So the law is the law. We're going to follow the law. And FERPA protects students' privacy. So it also means, with the exception of limited circumstances, we won't allow any federal, state, or local agent to interview or speak to a student without a parent or without an appropriate warrant signed by a judge. I don't know if that eases anybody's concern, but my principals know what to do. Forget about ICE. If the Clifton Police want to speak to a student, we have protocols in place. And if somebody's not sure, they call me. And I call that nice lady down at the end, who she looks nice, but she'll catch you. And finally, I think it's important to note that despite the rhetoric in our nation right now regarding immigration... and I don't care about the politics. I don't care if you're Republican, Democrat, MAGA, wear a red hat. I don't care. Doesn't matter. Despite the rhetoric, I would be very surprised if schools become the center of the government's attention on immigration. However, if it does, my duties as a school superintendent and a district leader remains very simple. I will provide every child in the One Clifton community with a learning environment where they feel safe, welcome, and prepared for a bright and productive future. Do everything I can under the law to protect our students. And our administrative team, who I met with yesterday... I'm sorry, I have it on do not disturb, but my children have the emergency breakthrough, and I apologize. And they know I'm at a board meeting. Maybe they don't. They don't listen to me. Other people's kids do a better job of listening to me. Our administrators, who I met with yesterday, are on top of this. They know what to do, and as a team, we are committed to protecting the rights and well-being of every student in our schools. Not worried about politics, my priority is taking care of our kids. Our schools will always remain spaces of opportunity for all. I hope that if there is someone out there with concerns, that maybe something I said tonight might alleviate a little bit of a concern. I'm not sure that it will. But I thank you for allowing me the time to share that, and now I'm going to do the whole thing in Spanish. Mr. Shahada, you want to share something?
Yes, I do. I definitely... I'm not going to touch that. That was a lot more in-depth than we rehearsed earlier. But no, so speaking as the assistant superintendent here, I know during our meeting yesterday, the Commissioner of Education sent down some really in-depth guidance, something that we haven't always gotten from past commissioners. So I know that our administrative team is combing through that, and it's going to do a great job of implementing it and safeguarding our students. And I also just have a pre-written statement of something I just felt that we should share as somebody who's in charge of all the facilities in the district and, you know, a large portion of our staff. Now, the Clifton Board of Education is steadfast in its commitment to ensuring that every student in our district, regardless of background, identity, or circumstance, is protected and supported. We recognize our legal and moral responsibility to provide a safe, inclusive, and high-quality educational environment that is free from any political interference. Our obligation is clear, to educate and empower all students consistent with constitutional protections issued by the Supreme Court in 1982. As a district, we remain vigilant in safeguarding our schools as safe spaces where students can thrive academically and socially without fear or prejudice. We will continue to uphold these principles and work collaboratively with our community to ensure that every student has the opportunity to succeed. And our offices are in constant communication with the DOE, and I am confident that we will have a resolution or some guidance that we can share with the district that is a little more reassuring than what you guys are hearing online. Thank you, President Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Shahada. I will in a second. So thank you, Mr. Shahada. Finally, tonight... by the way, I don't think I said anything controversial. There's no politics here. We're going to protect kids, all right? And if anybody thinks that's controversial, then you know what to do with it. There was something else I wanted to say. Oh, just Mr. Perez. After personnel gets voted on tonight, we do have a couple of staff members in the audience who couldn't wait till I stopped talking so that we could vote on personnel. So I'm going to stop talking right now, and I'm so happy somebody brought me flowers.
Mr. President Perez, can we move personnel first? This way?
Yes, we can.
Change the order, please. Thank you.
Okay. So jumping to personnel, we are going to... I'm looking for a motion to approve items 1 through... there with me one moment. 1 through 38.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Mejia, seconded by Commissioner Suarez. Thank you. Roll call, Mr... oh, discussion? Anyone? Okay, roll call, Mr. Shahada.
Ms. Bassford.
Voting yes on everything and abstaining on my name only on P-35. Thank you.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Dr. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Mejia?
Yes.
Ms. Siano?
Yes, abstaining on P-35, my name only.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes, abstaining on P-11, P-35, my name only, and P-36.
Vice President Santiago?
Yes, abstain on P-36.
President Perez?
Yes, abstaining on 2, standing myself on 35, and abstaining on 36.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I would like to invite up anyone who'd like to say a word at this point in time.
Good evening, everyone. President Perez, Vice President Santiago, Commissioners, Dr. Robertosi, Mr. Jengaro, Ms. Kuchalevitz, and Mr. Shahada. My name is Courtney Spurkini, and I'd like to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude for the opportunity to be appointed as the first assistant principal for School 11. School 11 is known as the heart of the community, which is so fitting, as its students, families, and staff have been part of my heart since the beginning of my career. It is both an honor and a privilege to step into this new role and continue the great work that is happening in our building. I have spent nearly a decade serving the community of School 11 as both a teacher and as an administrative intern this year. In this time, I've been able to work on numerous projects, serve on all committees, and implement our robust PBSIS program to help the wonderful children in our school succeed. I've had the privilege of collaborating daily with my principal, Ms. Shalabi, beginning last year with my academic internship, and I look forward to continuing and further developing the work that we have already begun, as well as incorporate the skills that I have learned in Admin Academy to work toward achieving our school's vision. I also have greatly benefited from a year of classes with Professor Robertosi. I'm so grateful to not only have the mentorship, but the confidence that Dr. Robertosi, Mr. Jengaro, and Ms. Shalabi have in me and providing me this opportunity, this extraordinary opportunity, to be of greater service to our district. I'd like to thank all of my incredible colleagues and mentors that I have been fortunate enough to learn and grow from throughout my tenure, and I truly appreciate the guidance and support that I have received from my fellow staff and administrators. Lastly, I'd like to thank my family for their unwavering support, especially this past year, as I embraced motherhood and a new career. Again, I thank you for this opportunity, and in this new capacity, I'm very... Again, I thank you for this opportunity, and in this new capacity, I'm very eager to help the students celebrate their strengths and achieve their goals, making a stronger One Clifton. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So the little guy here earlier.
It's bedtime. I just had to shut my baby monitor alarm off.
Okay. All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else out there who would just do speak?
Hello, everybody. My name is Adlina Suarez. I am appointed as the new Assistant Principal of School Twelve Annex. I want to start by sincerely thanking the Clifton Board of Education, Dr. Robert Ozy, Mr. Jengaro, and the entire interview committee for this incredible opportunity. I am truly honored and excited to officially join the Clifton Public Schools family. I also want to thank my amazing husband, Danny, my wonderful daughters, Scarlett and Jaslyn, my beautiful mom, Rose. Your love and support mean everything to me, and I'm deeply grateful for each of you. I'm thrilled to bring my passion for education to this community and help create meaningful opportunities for our students to succeed and thrive. Thank you all for trusting me with this important role. I can't wait to get started. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Shahada, you want to address the group?
You guys approved my contract too. Thank you. I got you guys on me for another year, so good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Shahada.
Do you want to go around speaker in front?
Absolutely not.
Congratulations. Okay, going to go back now to, next was my announcements. I'll hold my comments till the end. Unfinished business. Saying none, we'll move on. We have an expression of condolence for the Zalasko family. Commissioner Brunsack?
Thank you, Miss President. Whereas on December fourth, twenty twenty-four, the community noted with sorrow the passing of Ms. Agnes Zalasko. And whereas Ms. Zalasko had served the Clifton Board of Education and the children of Clifton faithfully and consciously for twenty-one years, Ms. Zalasko was a school psychologist in our special education department as a valued member of the child study team. Aggie took great pride in her work, and she truly made a difference in the lives of both children and families she worked with. She was always readily available for her students to assist them in any possible way and a valued mentor to her colleagues. Her passion for education was coupled with the pride of heritage. Aggie utilized these qualities to inspire students and others by frequently presenting her history of being a child of immigrant parents. Aggie's decision to her work and compassion for our students and families made a lasting impact on our community. Now therefore be it resolved that this resolution be forwarded to her bereaved family to serve as an expression of the great regard in which Ms. Zalasko was, held by the Board of Education, the administration, employees, and pupils of the Clifton Public Schools. And be it further resolved that the contents of this resolution be noted in their entirety in the official minutes of the Clifton Board of Education for future generations to peruse.
Thank you, Commissioner Brunsack. We have another expression of condolence this evening to the Paladovich family. Commissioner Suarez, could you please read that?
Thank you, President Paris. Whereas on January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the community noted with sorrow the passing of Mr. Severin Palodovich. Whereas Mr. Palodovich had served the Clifton Board of Education and the children of Clifton faithfully and conscientiously for thirty-three years. Mr. Palodovich was a teacher at Clifton High School of Russian and German and was the youngest vice principal ever hired in the Clifton High School system. Mr. Palodovich was known as a staunch disciplinarian. He became a renowned coach in Clifton, excuse me, coach in Clifton of the soccer team, which he started, as well as the tennis team. He won many county championships, as well as a state title in soccer. He was always ultra-competitive and gave of himself fully and completely to his players that he mentored with unwavering commitment. Now therefore be it resolved that this resolution be forwarded to his bereaved family to serve as an expression of the great regard in which Mr. Palodovich was held by the Board of Education, the administration, employees, and pupils of the Clifton Public Schools. And be it further resolved that the contents of this resolution be noted in their entirety in the official minutes of the Clifton Board of Education for future generations to peruse. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Suarez. This month is School Board Recognition Month. Commissioner Bassford, can you please read the proclamation?
My pleasure. EA one twenty-three twenty-five, School Board.
School Board Recognition Month in New Jersey. Whereas the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January two thousand and twenty-five to be School Board Recognition Month, a time when all residents can acknowledge the contributions made by our local school board members. And whereas the Clifton Board of Education is one of five hundred and eighty-one local school boards in New Jersey, which sets policy and oversees operation for public school districts. And whereas the Clifton Board of Education embraces the goal of high-quality education for all New Jersey public school students. And whereas New Jersey's local school board helped determine the educational goals for approximately one point four million children in pre-kindergarten through twelfth grade. And whereas New Jersey's five thousand local school board members, who receive no remuneration, that means no money, for services, acts as advocates for public school students as they work with administrators, teachers, and parents for the betterment of public education. And whereas school boards strive to provide the resources necessary to meet the needs of all students, including those with special needs. And whereas boards of education provide accountability to the public, they communicate the needs of the school district to the public, and they convey to school administrators the public's expression for the schools. And whereas New Jersey can take pride in its schools, which rank among the nation's best in key achievement indicators such as National Assessment of Education Progress scores and the preparation for college through the advancement, advanced placement offerings and S S T, S A T assessment. Now therefore be it resolved that the Clifton Public, the Clifton Board of Education does hereby recognize the services of school board members throughout New Jersey as we join communities statewide in observing January two thousand and twenty-five as School Board Recognition Month. And further, and be it further resolved that the Clifton Board of Education urges all New Jersey citizens to work with their local boards of education and public school staff towards the advancement of our children's education. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bassford.
I'd like to round of applause for our Board of Education.
Okay, thank you. This month is also Muslim Heritage Month. Commissioner Santiago, could you please read that proclamation?
Yes, thank you, President Paris. Whereas on April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, Governor Philip D. Murphy signed Joint Resolution Number Six by the Senate and the General Assembly of the State of New Jersey, designating the month of January of each year as Muslim Heritage Month. And whereas Muslims are the world's second-largest religious group practicing the Islamic faith. With approximately one point eight billion followers representing approximately twenty-four percent of the world's population, there are about three point four five million Muslims in the United States from diverse racial and ethnic backgrounds. The Muslim community represents one point one percent of the population in the United States. And whereas Muslims have made significant contributions throughout history, including notable achievements in philosophy, mathematics, chemistry, physics, astronomy, medicine, music, architecture, literature, and the arts. Their philanthropy, humanitarianism, civic responsibility, and culture helped to enrich the United States socially, economically, and historically. And whereas there are nearly three hundred thousand Muslim Americans in New Jersey, representing one of the largest Muslim-American communities in the United States, their contributions helped fortify and strengthen the economy and diversity of the people in our state and local communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Clifton School District Board of Education affirms January as Muslim Heritage Month.
Thank you, Commissioner Santiago. All right, Commissioners, I'm looking for a motion to approve under B, Education Administration, items one through fifteen.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Suarez, seconded by Commissioner Mejia. Any discussion? Commissioner Brunsack?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only question I have, the only issue that some parents gave me beef about the calendar was that it's pretty late in June. Is that the way, is that just the way the calendar falls or what? Because I think the, the school year is ending this year in two thousand and twenty-five, June twentieth, but next year it's ending. June twenty-fifth, so is it just the way the calendar falls?
Yeah, you know, thank you, Mr. Brunsack. It's a, it's a good question, and it's one I was also concerned about. Depending on the year and depending on whether the religious holidays that we traditionally take off for a fall on a weekend or a weekday depends on how late we go in the year. So next year, just so happens that several of the religious holidays that we close are on weekdays, as opposed to, I think this year there was one that fell on a weekend. Last year, there were two that fell on a weekend, so just kind of way the calendar falls. And if you remember a few years ago, I think you were on the board, when we did a kind of a calendar review, and one of the things we talked about, and it became very controversial, was not closing for religious holidays. We did a survey, and we got the community involved, and we had decided pretty overwhelmingly that it was best to, to close on all religious, on the religious holidays, so as to not seem to be favoring one over another. But the fact of the matter is, we're not required to. We do that out of respect for our community's diversity.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Suarez?
Thank you, President Paris. I was just, I know this year there was a conflict for Juneteenth because it connected with the last day of school, and logistically, it was challenging to take off. I was curious about for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, what was the rationale to not have Juneteenth off?
Thank you, Ms. Suarez. When, when we did that calendar review, and those who were on the board, if you remember, and can back me up on that, that was definitely a topic that came up, Juneteenth. And the discussion centered around the majority of the board at that time, and that has changed, we can always change it, but the majority of the board at that time felt that Juneteenth in particular was a holiday that if students weren't in school to learn something about it, that they might not learn about it at all. Because it was the end of the year, typically by June nineteenth or whenever the day falls, where we've already started half-days and final exams, it was decided that it would be better for the kids to be in school. Now, of course, we can always revisit that. We'll do what a majority of the board wants to do.
Thank you, Dr. Robert Ozy. I, I see because that this coming, or next year, it's on a Friday and a half a day. You know, I think about how we acknowledge MLK, and of course, we need to keep that. But you know, how often do students, you know, sometimes there's sports events on that day, and it's not acknowledged similarly. So I'm thinking if we can acknowledge, you know, our black folks in the community, our African-American folks in the community, as a way to see this as a national holiday and commemorate it as such, I think that it's a, I think it's important for our community. And if, and I don't know if anyone else has discussion on it, because I, last year, I mean, granted, he was in second grade at the time, my son did not learn about anything. I said, I asked him, like, did you, did you discuss anything about Juneteenth? He had no idea what I was talking about, so we had a separate conversation at home. So, you know, I think sometimes that happens in the acknowledgement of, if a day is off, they may at least ask why the day is off, or at least some kind of acknowledgement. Whereas if a day of school goes by, it seems like another day of school with potentially no acknowledgement. So I'm open to discussion, but that's, that's my idea and thought of acknowledging it to honor the people in our community.
Ms. Suarez, may I just add one more thing before Mr. Brunsack? I, I hear you, absolutely hear you, and administration directs Juneteenth to be discussed. Whether or not it was discussed in your child's first or second grade classroom, I can't be sure, but I believe your son. But the other thing is, it's not always on the nineteenth, so the state and federal holidays are both different. I think New Jersey celebrates it on the day, but the federal holiday is observed on the Monday, or that might be vice versa. And again, no problem if the majority of the board wants to close on that day. It's very simply, all it would do is it moves the calendar back another day, and we would close on June twenty-sixth. But I think Mr. Brunsack wanted to say.
Commissioner Brunsack?
That, that wasn't the only issue, so both my kids, they learned about it that day, you know, last year. So I just want to let everybody know. If administrative directed that, that's fine, but they, they did learn something. And the thing is too, I, I think a lot of other districts, they don't have it precisely because of the proximity to the end of the, of the school year as well. So you're going to be extending another school day, and we try to be inclusive with everything, you know, but at some point, I, I think a decision was made, so that's what I recall from the past couple of years regarding the school calendar. So I, I just want to tell you what, what's happened over here.
Commissioner Bassford?
We, I was on the board with Dr. Danny and Mr. Canova, and we were also worried about, it was half-days, learning, it was also the heat. So my question is, are the air conditioning going to be ready by the end of the month in June? Okay? So I'm open for anything. It's only one day. People are squawking about the twenty-fifth now. They wanted it earlier, but because of all the holidays. So I don't know, maybe if you have to invoke the whole committee again and revisit the calendar, but I, I wouldn't have a problem with moving it to the twenty-sixth, because you, this is a year, almost two, almost two years technically. Because you don't have to worry about graduation and all the other things that you have to plan for that. Graduation is always, everything revolves around that graduation date, once you've set it in stone, correct? Thank you.
That's correct, Ms. Bassford. Yeah, the graduate, even if we, if we don't use the snow days, and even if I took a couple of days off the end of the year, or if I recommended to the board, and we did that, graduation would still stay on that day. So that, that's another variable, team, just to think about, is the snow days, if we don't use, what we've done in the past is maybe add a day on Memorial Day weekend to lengthen that, and maybe take a day off the end of the year. So there are some things you can do with that too. But again, calendar is one thing, that is the board's prerogative, right? So I'm happy to do what the majority of the board wants to do. My preference is that students are in school that day and learn about it, and maybe administration has to, Mr. Brunsack has his kids learned, Ms. Suarez has her son did. We just have to do a better job of making sure that something is done if we're going to be in school. If that's the justification for staying open, then I have to do a better job of making sure that something is taught that day. Please don't, if you guys want to snap ahead, please just, you know.
Anyone else on this topic? Commissioner.
So the other, the other piece of it, from what I recall, is that this also ties to Columbus Day, because we said if we give this day as a day off, then you need Columbus Day as a day off, which is considered a half-day now. And the idea was that, exactly that. I, I remember Jim Dale even saying it, that, you know, we want people to learn about these days. A lot, a lot of kids, when we talk about Labor Day, Memorial Day, they don't even know what that means, right? So I remember that was the logic around it, but again, I'm open to revisiting anything. But then if you're giving both those days, now you're talking about the following Monday you're off instead of that Thursday. And people are already complaining about a long calendar.
President Santiago?
So I'm open to discussing that, wherever that is, policy, or wherever that goes to. Columbus Day, there is an early dismissal. Juneteenth, there is an early dismissal, not because of Juneteenth, however. Right? Whereas Columbus Day, there is an early dismissal because of Columbus Day. There's no early dismissal for Juneteenth because of Juneteenth. There's just early dismissal, the whole last week of school, whatever that is. Can I say something about a different holiday really quickly, just to clarify? So on the calendar, Veterans Day says observed, and, you know, you look at it, it says school closed, school closed, so not school, schools not closed on Veterans Day, that's just there, we observe it, but school is open, right? Or else it would have said school closed on the calendar. Okay, thanks.
I think perhaps we can get some recommendation, options, let's say, to bring before the board to consider and discuss, maybe, maybe there's a few different options we can look at.
Mr. Paris, I would, it's, I would recommend, you know, the board passes this calendar tonight, and we decide to change it next month. It's not, I don't think that's a big deal. I think there's plenty of notice. But it's a real simple thing. But it's a real simple thing. Unless there are other problems, if, if it's just Juneteenth, it's, we close that day and we add a day at the end. That, that would be really the only thing that would be different. Or, the only other option is to reduce a, instead of three snow days, go down to two. So, that's another option. It's really just a matter of whether we close on Juneteenth or not.
Now, Dr. Robertozzi, if I, if I could just say, I do believe that we have to, school has to be done by June 30th. So, if we run out of snow days, I think it happened in Linden one year, you had to go to school like on a Saturday or something like that. We had like four hours on a Saturday. So, that's always something to keep in mind. We've been very fortunate for the, the, the snowstorms, you know, it's just been freakishly cold, but you know, we don't know what's going to happen next year. So, that's something to be mindful of. I don't think anybody wants to come to school on a Saturday.
Okay. Well, we'll look at our options and bring some recommendations back to the board for discuss and consider.
President Paris, I'd like to make a suggestion. If we can bring it to the Education Committee, that there is some kind of standard curriculum that day per, per school level and also maybe making the students involved in some kind of community service that day, a project or to, you know, bring awareness, that would be my recommendation to the Education Committee.
If I can make a comment, we already actually do have that embedded. We do have a K through 12 mandated and multicultural curriculum crosswalks document. It is recommended that teachers incorporate these. We would, we can make that more mandatory. The majority of teachers should be doing, a lot of them already do. Juneteenth falls under, although it's a different month, we, one of the mandates is African-American history month or Black History Month, but we also do have a component on MLK where lessons are pushed out through the Social Studies Department to all of our teachers and the same is done for Juneteenth. But we can make sure that our administrators do confirm when they check lesson plans to ensure that this is being done because I know that we had just recently just done so for Martin Luther King Day and that was just pushed out. This is actually a, I'm looking at the document now, I want to say, it is a 77-page document of recommendations that address all of the different multicultural and mandated components such as Amistad, Black History, Hispanic History, Juneteenth, Holocaust and so on.
Mr. Paris?
Okay. So, yes.
I just, and, and again, it's, it's what, you know, but, you know, the only thing is if you want to keep that date, listening to Mr. Shahada said about, you know, watching out for the days and keeping days there and you want to keep that on the Thursday because you don't want to go any longer. I mean, you know, I would hate to do. I mean, it's, but like, the only two, two option things this season, like either that February, that 17th, taking that day out because that's not, and then moving it to the 19th or, you know, somehow taking out the, the staff professional development. Okay. I'm just saying it, like bringing students in on the third and giving them a half day and a half day professional development and then another half day for students and a half day professional development. So, it's not a lot. So, the, so the teachers would come in on, what is it, the, the second? On the third, students would come in and third and fourth would be a half day and this way it's like students are already in and then you're, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know, seeing.
I think it's just important to note too.
I'm referencing September.
Dr. Danny, that I, I don't create this calendar in a vacuum. This calendar is made with feedback from multiple staff members, including our district collaborative team, which is a team of 20 or so people from every bargaining unit and every job category. So, yes, there are a myriad of things we could do. We could take that four-day weekend away in February, make it a three-day weekend. But, the reason why it's in there is because the staff really, really like that. And February is a tough time, the, the dark, cold days of February, it's something people look forward to. If you remember a couple of years ago, we had the week off in February and some people asked for that. I, I really enjoyed that, but then you're in school till July, you know, it's, it's a lot. So, again, you can do anything you want with the calendar, you can't do everything. So, we kind of got to prioritize. But I think it's a good discussion for Education Committee.
We, we will bring it back up and look at it. Roll call. I think we need a roll call.
So, a quick point, a point of reference. So, we're going to vote on the calendar tonight and then make amendments as we go.
We're going to look at if we need to modify it. Right.
So, we had a motion by Ms. Suarez and a second by Mr. Mejia.
Correct.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Dr. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Mejia?
Yes.
Mr. Seattle?
Yes.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
Vice President Santiago?
Yes.
President Paris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next would be request for a motion for de-financing facilities, item number one through 18.
Motion. Second.
Looked by Commissioner Brunsack, second by Dr. Danny. Discussion.
I have a question and I didn't get to call you earlier today about the use of facilities. Everyone is current that are paying for the use of facilities or is anyone in, on this list?
No, everybody on this list is paid to date.
Okay, thank you. Can, is there any way in the future, if we could just like put a little asterisk next to, or something, you could put some kind of symbol so we know so I don't have to bother you?
I wouldn't recommend that. I, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable singling out a single organization just.
So, I'll just call you.
You can call me. You can always call me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call, Ms. Shah.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Dr. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Mejia?
Yes.
Mr. Seattle?
Yes.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
President Paris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Board member comments, we'll start with Commissioner Bassford.
Good evening, everyone. Last week, I had the privilege of attending a conference hosted by Assemblywoman Allison Colazo as a representative of New Jersey School Boards Association, 27th Legislative District. The event was held on, focused on immigration rights and included presentations by the ACLU, Make the Road New Jersey and the Lowenstein-Sandler LLP Group. I'm proud to share that the Clifton Public School District was well represented that day. There was a lot of people there at the conference. There was, the, the discussion was highly informative and the connections made with fellow attendees was invaluable. Everyone got information, so I would strongly encourage my fellow board members to engage with our administration, inquire what steps the district is taking as we heard with Dr. Robertozzi's report. I'm sorry, I, you, I wrote this before you spoke. To ensure that all students feel protected and supported regardless of their circumstances. It was a really good conference and I hope to have another one next year. We, we've learned a lot. Attended the Big North event on Monday to watch our cheerleaders, CHS Cheerleaders shine. It was a proud day to say, well, all Mustangs, way to go, girls. You did an amazing job. I would like to extend my gratitude to the business office on their outstanding work with the audit and ensuring that the Clifton Public Schools remain fiscally sound. So, kudos. Your dedication does not go unnoticed. Okay? A heartfelt thank you and well-deserved to the Clifton Education Association, the CEA for your generosity and positive impact you make throughout your events. Your efforts truly enrich the lives of so many in our one, Clifton One community. I would like to express my heartfelt thanks to Lori Lamanna for your unwavering dedication to our students. I saw personally the questions you were asking, the notes you were taking last week. I, I was just amazed by that, that you put all students first in their rights to be protected and to feel safe every single day. So, thank you. Your passion is evident every time you step up to the microphone. It is clear that you don't just talk the talk, you walk the walk. So, thank you for all you do. That's all I have. Looking to, forward to many different events coming up in the next couple of weeks. So, thank you, everyone, and have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Bassford. Commissioner Brunsack?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the administration and staff in our district for an exceptional audit based on the presentation by Mr. Lurch tonight. The opinion provided was unqualified, which is the highest possible grade that you could get in an audit. Tonight, we also renewed Mr. Shahada's contract and pleased to have him here for at least another year as he is a sought out by other districts, I'm sure. I, I certainly suspect that to be the case. So, looking forward to working with you for another year, sir. Finally, I want to thank all the volunteers in our city. There's almost always something going on in this city and in a lot of the school facilities as well. So, these are not all school-based. Some of them are, are clinics for, from the rec department across the street, but are, we provide the facilities for them. But a lot of these clinics and tournaments, a lot of them wouldn't happen without the volunteer work. So, I want to thank and give a shout out to all of you. There's a wrestling tournament this Saturday and I'm really pumped up for it. Lot of the kids that, that my, some plays baseball with, they're going to be competing in this, this Saturday and that's in the lower gym at CHS. So, if anybody has any time to, you know, come spend some time over there, it's, it's absolutely amazing, very high energy. So, just.
Wrestling, Mr. Brunsack?
Yes, sir. Clifton Junior Mustangs. And so, I just want to give a shout out to all the volunteers. None of this would happen without your generosity and you are priceless. The value is the time and all the energy and resources that you put into this. So, thank you, everybody who volunteers in Clifton. Thank you for your time and God bless America. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Brunsack. Commissioner Canova?
All right, good evening. I'll talk a little bit about the strategic planning that, that we all, all attended. It was great seeing representation from all the schools and all the public. I would like to see more student representation. So, if we get out to the students and maybe somehow, I know we talked about homework, homework pass or whatever we want to do, but I, I would like to see more student representation in some of those meetings. My condolences go out to the Zalinko and Paladoj family. Our band room renovations look fantastic. I was very pleased to see, rededicated to Mr. Morgan. He was a pillar to our community and to making the CHS band, the show band of the East that we all know and love. I was able to attend the Big North event for the Clifton Cheer Team. They did an amazing job, came in, came in first once again. So, congratulations to them and congratulations to our Mr. Shahada on another great financial report. I know $300 million is a lot and just having a few minor, minor, minor infractions is phenomenal. So, thank you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Canova. Commissioner Dr. Danny?
Thank you, President Paris. Thank you to all the speakers who came out and spoke. Thank you to the Clifton Education Association, to Mr. Lurch for the comprehensive audit. Congratulations to all of those who advanced their careers, were recognized tonight. And Mr. Shahada, thank you for all you do, keeping us in compliance and doing a great job and happy to have you here. And happy Chinese Lunar New Year and, because we're off, our districts are off another holiday that we're off for, you know. And, yeah, we, yeah.
Well, we gotta add that.
Add that one, start adding them. And happy birthday to my grandson Noah because he's four years old. So, made me a first grandma.
Nice.
Thank you, Dr. Danny.
You guys got a top Chinese New Year, so.
Commissioner Mejia?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to, it's going to be very brief. I want to congratulate Coach Lembrick on being Coach of the Year for Passaic County. On top of that, our boys indoor track and field team did win county championships a few days ago, so big congratulations to them, to all the coaches who are part of it. Huge congratulations to our cheer team, they're always doing amazingly. Every time I see them perform, I just get so pumped, the way that they're doing all these flips and everything. Most of you guys are probably going to get a college scholarship if you decide to do tumbling, so keep on going at it. Thank you to the community for coming out for our strategic planning. It was great, you know, that was the first, I remember it happening during COVID, but this was the first one in person and it was amazing to see all the staff, faculty and community members that were out there. Next up, I want to thank Mrs. Lori Lama. Thank you for saying those words in English and in Spanish. I remember in sixth grade when you told me that you spoke Spanish and people were trying to fool around and say, you know, words you actually knew what they were saying. So, when you spoke, it just reminded, gave me a big flashback of being in your computer literacy class. And finally, thank you to Dr. Robertozzi as our Chief Education Officer, sharing those, you know, strong words of remark to our greater community here in Clifton. I know, you know, probably gave a huge, you know, thank you. So, thank you for those.
Thank you, Commissioner Mejia. Commissioner Seattle?
Thank you. Thank you to all the speakers. Thank you to Mark for the student rep report. Mr. Shahada, very happy to have you for another year and very happy with the audit. Dr. Danny, oh, Dr. Danny, Danny Robertozzi, you have a lot of fans out there. So, somebody sent me the New Jersey Education Association review with an article about you, a superintendent shares LMC journey and results. So, you have people just sending me this. That's how many fans you have. I was happy to read it. I have it here if anybody else does. We're very lucky to have you.
Thank you.
I want to provide everybody with one-year update on my progress and efforts as a commissioner. Several members of our community have expressed the importance of keeping an open dialogue and sharing updates. I wholeheartedly agree. We should always strive to honor the wishes of the community. So, over the past year, I've made it a priority to grow as a commissioner and serve our district to the best of my ability, to enhance my knowledge and understanding of our responsibilities. There's numerous webinars and classes I've taken on that, keeping myself informed about the current and potential changes at both the state and federal level, levels. I served on several committees with my commissioners, including facilities, security, residency and technology and negotiations. Additionally, I chaired the municipal alliance, which provided valuable insight into our district's needs and priorities. The committees have allowed me to work closely with my fellow commissioners, gaining a deeper appreciation for the challenges and opportunities that we all face. Beyond the committee work, we all attended the conference in Atlantic City where I participated in various courses enhancing my effectiveness as a commissioner. Throughout the year, I also made it a priority to listen to the voices of the community. I have fielded calls from many of you regarding concerns and suggestions, bringing these insights to the attention of our administration. I want to express my gratitude for the administration for working diligently to address and resolve these matters. First year was both enriching and eye-opening. I remain committed to serving our community with transparency, accountability and dedication. Lastly, I want to send my condolences out to the friends and family of Carmine Simone. I went to school with Carmine and even though we grew apart, as most of us do, we still send each other messages touching base and keeping in touch with each other. Carmine was a good friend to me when I was in high school and I am truly and deeply sorry to hear of his untimely passing. Life is not guaranteed and we all need to remember that and treat each day like the gift it is. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Seattle. Commissioner Suarez?
Thank you, President Paris. Good evening, everyone. This month, I had my first strategic planning meeting and it, I was really pleased to see the community come together and happy to be a part of it. To Mark, your student representative, thank you for sharing the information about student initiatives that prepare for the cell phone ban and as well as checking emails more frequently. I think that's really great to see the students really care about their future and creating good practices now that adults struggle with. So, kudos to you all. Thank you so much to the CEA for all that you do for our students and families. It's really beautiful to see that you truly have their best interests at heart. I love to hear everything that was shared tonight. And congratulations to the new assistant principals that came out tonight. I'm excited to have you in the community. And lastly, congratulations to Ahmed Shahada and his team. To have a near-perfect audit is not an easy feat and I see personally his dedication and I know a lot of work goes into it. So, congrats and I'm happy to be a part of this Clifton team. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Suarez. I also add my thanks to Mr. Shahada and especially your team. Oh, I'm sorry, Tony. Yes, Vice, I'm sorry, Vice President Santiago.
Everybody get used to it. Everybody get used to it. Well, let's start with that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tony. Yes, Vice-
It's okay.
I'm sorry, Vice President Santiago.
Everybody get used to it. Everybody get used to it. Well, let's start with that. So, this is really our first comments of the year, so I just want to thank everybody, my fellow colleagues here for electing me Vice President. I think, you know, we've done a lot of good things last year as a team, and if we continue to focus on what's important, which is our students and providing a quality education for them, then we're always going to be doing the right thing and doing good things for them, so I look forward to continuing that. So, Dr. Robertosi, thank you very much for the comments on the sensitive sites as well as swatting, because that is an uptick, and it's a lot of concern. I see a lot of parents, you know, there's another one and that kind of stuff, and then there's speculation, and then there's an all-clear, and there's still speculation, but thanks for mentioning that. Please go out and support our teams that are competing this weekend. We've got hockey, we've got varsity wrestling, I believe also girls wrestling, and the cheer team. I look forward to the Sweeney Todd play. Can't wait for that. That's always a good one. Thank you to the CEA and to the volunteers for your grants and for everything you guys do. Happy Muslim Heritage Month and Lunar New Year, happy Muslim Heritage Month, Lunar New Year, to all of our students, family, and the community celebrating. Thank you to Mr. Shahada for another good audit. Keep up the great work. If you have not seen the music suite or our band rooms, they're amazing. Go see them, please. Thank you to Bob Morgan for his 40 years of dedication to our students. Amazing. I think that's all I've got for now. Have a great night.
Thank you, Commissioner Santiago. My apologies for skipping you. It was unintentional. Again, thank you to Mr. Shahada and especially your team. The results of your hard labor are clear in Mr. Lurch's report, and you make our district very proud. Thank you to Mark, our student representative, and piggybacking off of what Commissioner Suarez said, the thing that impressed me the most is we have students that are helping roll out our policy, cell phones, to their fellow students. Just a team and cooperative approach is fantastic, and I thank Mark and the student council and the student body for being such great teammates for us. Some dates I'd like to just remind the public of. February 6th, everybody's mentioned, is our strategic planning meeting, Part Two. If you didn't come the first time, you missed out on a very productive and great meeting. Come on out and see what it's all about. The more the merrier. February 20th, we will be holding district and student awards. That'll be at the high school. That's a quarterly event now, so put that on your calendar. February 13th is our next regular Board of Education meeting. February 1st is Christopher Columbus and Woodrow Wilson basketball team rivalry competition at Clifton High School. So, come on out and see the two teams play. That's at 9:00 AM on February 1st. February 7th, School 9 PTO is sponsoring Pocketbook Bingo. So, for $35, you might be able to win a designer pocketbook. February 21st is Woodrow Wilson's HSA gift card bingo. All different kinds of organizations, you can win a gift card too. It's $25 to attend. They're both great events to support our kids and their HSAs. And condolences to the Zalaskoff and Paladovitch families on their losses. Condolences. That's all I have. So, the only thing left is new business, opening up a new business.
I have a request. We all received an email about an incident at Seale B. I would like that issue to go to facilities and also security committees about seeing what we can do as a district, because I know we're up against a wall, and I think that if we all put our collective minds together for those two committees and then bring something back to the wood, that we can come up with a solution for the parents that are having issues at Seale B.
But we'll also bring it up as a municipal alliance.
Thank you.
We have been discussing Seale B every meeting.
But I think it's time that we have to bring the ball back to this court, and we have to play it, because I don't think we're going to get anywhere on the other side of the street. I'm sorry. It's just my personal opinion, but I think that we need to be more proactive, especially after the email that I received today. So, I'd like to see some motion on this side of the street move forward.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Right. I just want to comment on what she said. So, I think it is up to us, because according to the city, we're on municipal alliance. We've heard several times, they're not ever going to put a crossing guard there, because that is a school where the parent is supposed to cross the child, so there's no need for a crossing guard. There is no intention, because of that, I think it's going to fall on us. They have no intention of doing anything with that school other than speed bumps and a flash, not even speed bump. I think a flashing sign is what we're getting out of that.
Yeah, but control of traffic is Clifton Police Department.
Yes.
And that's really, I think, what this incident comes down to, a lack of traffic control. So, perhaps they can reconsider, maybe a policeman to get things organized there, but it is their responsibility.
We're actually scheduled to meet on the 4th, so we'll put that on the agenda.
Definitely have to talk, but we also will discuss what we might be able to do on our own as well to help-
Did they say speed bumps at the last meeting? I don't recall that.
You know, so we talked about speed bumps and bump outs at a few different locations, but I don't think that was why.
We're talking about pedestrian, improving the crossing with some flashing lights, you know, like pedestrian crossing lights. That was, again, something that had to be in the budget for next year.
In addition to that, they're planning to put what I'm going to call ballads in front of Seale B in the facility right where students and families can cross, so parents can't park there to hopefully clear that small area. That is underway as we speak.
Yeah, that is what they discussed at the meeting, remember? They did mention that. They mentioned that they would do that, because I brought up the fact that it's just, you know, something waiting to happen. I brought that up at the last municipal alliance.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Knoval.
So, I have a, if we're talking about just ideas, I have a crazy idea, but I think it would work. So, right now, Seale B is only pre-K, and we have another school that we're talking about putting middle school in. If we took all four of those and put middle schools, so Columbus, Woodrow, Seale B, and this new school, and figured out six to seven goes here, or five and six goes here, seven and eight goes here, so separate them, that would leave more space in all our lower elementaries, which is what we want anyway, and it would be a lower set of pre-K in there. You'd only have 25, 20 students or whatever it is in those pre-Ks. So, that could alleviate them being all in one section. Anyone who's strolling a child can get them there without having to be a drop-off, like you do for, like, professional, you know, pre-Ks where you pay for. So, I know that's totally crazy. I know that's totally crazy, especially since-
Well, no, it might not be crazy.
Especially since Seale B is set with the bathrooms being lower and like, oh-
Statistically, Joe, we have to think about the transportation aspect of it. We are already crossing town left and right, barely making it by the skin of our teeth.
We'd have to rezone for those-
Yes.
For those areas.
Well, rezoning is, obviously, is part of the issue, but just getting from one zone to the other within, you know, the timeframes that are required, because every school is staggered, the way, you know, the administration has, like, elementary's at 8:50 or whatever they start, and then it kind of cascades down from there. So, I know my transportation director, Liz Nick, is sitting at home listening to this, and her brain is literally about exploded.
I think she should be a part of the meeting. If we're going to have a meeting about it, I think she should be a part of that meeting. So, I think we could brainstorm ways to get there. It's going to cost, and we just need to set a goal as to really what we want. Me personally, I would love to see pre-K at the elementaries. Considering they're young, they only have one car in a family, and one's off at work, and the other parent's bringing the child to school, I don't know. I just feel like that's the best place for it. We're set up for local schools when they're younger. So, if that's the way we go, then that's the way we go. But I'm open to any conversation, and I could be a part of any committee.
So, this is a really good PSA to have people to come out to the strategic planning if they have what you have. Also, I just, I just, that email really resonated with me, because I remember, you know, my days bringing my children to school, and as parents, we mobilized and we made a safe drop-off space for our children. You can't do that with a pre-K, because it's, you know, they're here, and then they go to another school. It's a quick turnover with the student population. I'm a bi-monthly attendee of council meetings, Alan, with all due respect. I really think that this board, the nine of us, and with the administration have to come up to a solution on our end. I'm just, because I don't think it's going to happen. Joe, with no disrespect to you and the committee for municipal alliance, I think we'll be having the same conversation the next meeting, and then the next meeting. I think we need to take action now. That's just me, and I'm really worried that, after reading that email, and I know the family it came from, they're diehard, dedicated to Clifton. It was very heartfelt, because I know they were concerned for safety of all the students. So, that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Mr. Paris, I just wanted to say, you know, I do agree with you, Ms. Bassford, that I think, because I've been on municipal alliance forever before Joe, and then that, I mean, we've had traffic issues the whole time, and I was actually, I got caught in the dismissal by Seale B, and that's why I brought that up at the municipal alliance meeting, because it was just mayhem. I mean, I don't know if anybody has ever gone there at dismissal, but it's like, everybody's just, it's, and I said, because there's like little children crossing and parents and, you know, cars just swerving around and just traffic, and then people getting annoyed and trying to cut, you know, people off, and it's like, just really terrible there. I mean, I was caught in it, and I was like, as I was sitting there in the traffic, I thought, this is just an accident waiting to happen. So, you know, again, I just think that it's something that we got to come up with, with something. So, I don't know about the bar, I don't know how much that's going to help with things, but it's literally like parents just crossing, people getting annoyed, and, you know, and like, I really do feel that a crossing guard there would help, like, somebody who comes out, maybe just, you know, or either an officer, or some, you know, something, because it's just, it's a tight, and everybody's trying to get in, and everybody's aggravated, and little children are crossing the streets, and parents are crossing them with all these cars going, and it's like, you either stop or I'm just crossing anyway, because I'm frustrated. So, not me personally, like, that's just what you see there.
So, President Paris, if I may, I know Joe, Ms. Shiano, has municipal alliance, so we'll start there, and then Judy's going to remind me tomorrow morning to put in our facilities, and kind of put our heads together, and we can regroup at the next board meeting when we have a little more information.
Okay. Perfect. Anyone else? Okay, we do have some things for executive session. So, we have both some personnel and some legal discussions. Action will be taken. Will take approximately-
Forty minutes.
Okay, about forty minutes. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Bassett, second by Commissioner Brunchak, take five, break, and we'll see you in the back room. Thank you, everyone.[1346.04]
We got five.
Yes.
Okay, we are returning from our executive session. Roll call, Mr. Shahada.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Suarez.
Roll call.
Ms. Bassford. Here. Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova. Dr. Danny, she is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Bassford. Second by Commissioner Brunsack. Have a nice weekend.
Ciao.